Okay, good evening commissioners, this is Kelly Thompson. I'm gonna be taking role this evening for Bill. So we'll start with Commissioner Stevens.
Hi, I'm here.
And Commissioner Hardy?
Present.
Commissioner McCaskill?
Present.
Commissioner Jordan? Commissioner Jordan?
She's here. She's here, she's on mute.
On mute. Alright, getting the hang of it. I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Key?
Here.
And Commissioner Rick?
Present.
Mr. Telaga?
Present.
Commissioner Coney?
Present.
And Commissioner Blower?
Here.
Thank you. And so now I'm going to read the statement regarding remote meetings under the Open Meetings Act. All boards and commissions must adhere to all laws established under the Michigan compiled laws, and in accordance with the revisions of the Open Meetings Act adopted in Senate Bill 1108, as passed on October 13th, 2020, and signed into law on October 16th, 2020. A public announcement shall be made by each member who is attending the meeting remotely, that he or she is attending the meeting remotely, and except for those in military service stating his or her physical location. So I'm gonna go back through the role, and if you could please state the city and state where you're calling from, and that you're attending remotely. That would be great. So we'll start again with Commissioner Stevens.
Um, I'm present, and I am located in Flint, Michigan, and attending the meeting remotely.
Thank you. Commissioner Hardy?
Uh, Commissioner Hardy, I'm present, and I'm from Flint, Michigan, at, in Flint, Michigan, I should say, and attending the meeting remotely.
Thank you. Commissioner McCaskill?
Uh, Commissioner McCaskill, Los Angeles, California.
Thank you. Commissioner Jordan?
I'm here in Flint, Michigan.
Thank you. Commissioner Key?
Commissioner Key, I'm attending remotely, here in Flint, Michigan.
Thank you. And Commissioner Rick?
I'm attending remotely in Flint, Michigan.
Thank you. And Mr. Chair?
Attending remotely in Flint, Michigan, but I wish I was with Ari.
And Commissioner Coney?
Um, I am on remotely and in Flint, Michigan.
Thank you. And last but not least, Commissioner Blower.
Commissioner Blower, attending remotely from Flint, Michigan. Thank you so much.
Okay. Next thing we're gonna move on is adoption of our agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve it as submitted.
I move that we adopt the agenda as submitted.
Commissioner Blower, support.
Alright, no other discussion out of guys and ladies? Alright. Um, we don't need to do a roll call on this, do we?
No voice vote is signed, Mr. Chair.
Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We're going to open up the public forum now. Uh, the opportunity, there's anybody in the public can speak now about anything. There will be another opportunity to speak when the cases are presented, if you want to talk about a particular case. Do we have anybody here from the public that would like to speak? Is there anybody on the phone, aware of staff? Casey?
There are none.
Okay. Alright, let's move down to reports. Any staff reports?
None for me.
Commissioner Telaga, did I miss approval of the minutes from October, or?
You did.
Okay.
Sorry.
Has everyone met Jeff, our new lead planner?
No.
Okay, um, I guess Jeff can introduce himself, that can be our staff report.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name's Jeff Schiffman, I'm the new lead planner, starting my third week at the city. Hopefully, when all this passes, we'll get to meet in person, but Suzanne had a council meeting tonight, so she was unable to attend, so I'm stepping in.
Gonna give us a picture, Jeff.
Picture, unfortunately, I haven't shaved and I'm wearing a wooded sweatshirt, I wasn't prepared for meeting today, so.
You really put him on the spot there.
Uh, I was not expecting to be on a meeting this evening, so I didn't.
It's all good, we just like to put a face with a voice. You could've put your high school senior picture up, we'd have been okay.
So, could I, could I get the name again, and again, Jeff who?
Schiffman, S-C-H-I-F-F, as in Frank, M-A-N.
And you be supporting us from now on, Jeff?
Uh, it's S-C-H-I-F-F-M-A-N. And I'll be in the background helping the zoning staff.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got a council meeting going at the same time right now. So. Okay, move down to communications, staff, you got anything?
I don't.
No? Cory? No? Jeff? No? Casey? No?
No.
Okay. Alright, we're gonna open up the public hearing. Um, ZBA 20-2244, Flint Housing Commission request a non-use, let me make sure I got this right. It's a non-use variance, right? Cause I, my two things are disputed.
Right, it's a non-use.
There are, yeah. And the applicant, non-use variance at 5701 Edgar Holt Drive to permit six existing units to be enlarged, to allow for the property created barrier-free accessible units. Applicant, I hope you're on the line with us, please.
Yes, sir, I am, this is Jason Bor, the Director of Development with Flint Housing Commission.
Hi Jason, can you kind of give us an overview of this project?
Sure. So, it, this is our Aldridge Place Apartments, uh, Edgar Holt Drive. It's a 93-unit apartment townhome community, built in 1984. There are 16 buildings on the property, including one building is a community room and management office. The property consists of 93 apartment units. There are 63 two-bedroom units, 23 bedroom units, and 10 four-bedroom units. So the property is, uh, public housing, and we are seeking to do what's called a RAD conversion, which, uh, converts the property funding source to a Section 8 contract. Uh, as part of that transition, we are looking to do significant renovations to the property. The property currently does not have any ADA accessible apartment units. So we are required by our funding sources to have 5% of the units ADA accessible, and then 2% hearing and visual accessibility. So, in order to achieve the, the 5% barrier-free accessibility, uh, we are seeking to put additions on six of the apartment units. Uh, six being five of the two bedrooms and one of the four bedrooms. Um, the, the issue that we kind of ran into was the, all of the two and three-bedroom apartments, the bedrooms are on the second level. Uh, so in order to make, uh, accessible units, the most reasonable and cost-effective way was to do a, uh, one-story addition on the ends of the buildings where the two-bedroom units are. So five of the two-bedroom units will become three-bedroom units, and those, those apartment units will have a accessible bedroom, bathroom, and kitchen area on the main level, um, as well as, uh, there'll be a barrier-free accessible parking spaces and accessible routes to get to the apartments. The four-bedroom unit does have a bedroom on the first floor, but it is not, it does not have the proper term radiuses and space, uh, for, to achieve ADA accessibility. So we're doing a smaller addition on a four-bedroom unit, for the bedroom, bathroom, kitchen area to be, uh, barrier-free accessible. Um, one other thing, all, all the six of these apartments will also have a laundry area, uh, created on the first floor, because currently they are in the basements. So, the, the main levels for six apartments will be barrier-free accessible, and that is the purpose for tonight's request, is to be able to put the additions onto the property.
Before we open it up, question, Jane, from the board. Um, I'm gonna open up the public hearing one more time, just to make sure we don't have anybody that wants to speak for or against this. And then we'll go ahead. So I'm gonna open up the public hearing, do we have anybody here that wants to speak for or against this project?
There is no one.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing, let's move along. Um, uh, Jason?
Yes.
Um, uh, and I, I, I don't know if this can hit the memory, how many total units are there, again?
93.
And you're doing five units, right?
We are doing six total.
Which represents roughly 6, 7% of your total. Was that, that's the meet federal requirements, right?
The requirement is to have 5%.
Okay.
I generally apply the 5% to two-bedroom sizes. So, uh, there are 10 four-bedrooms, we want to make sure that one of those 10 is accessible. Um, and then we'll have five three-bedroom units that are accessible. So two, five of the two bedrooms will become three bedrooms.
Okay. Staff, this property is zoned A2?
Correct. It's a, um, legal non-conformity.
Okay. Jerry, didn't you have a question on that, about? When we were talking earlier about A2, why it wasn't changed when it was constructed? We got Jerry muted there. Commissioner Key?
Sorry. Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay, Jeff, first of all, let me get one thing out of the way. You've mentioned to meet the ADA. Is that the American Disability Act?
Uh, yes, it's actually UFFIS, that has the reference to the 5%. Uh, okay. Uniform Federal Accessibility Standard.
I'd just like to know what acronyms are before they're used in conversation, that's all.
Understand, thank you.
And, uh, as far as, when I looked at your blueprint here, uh, and I was wondering why do we had to issue a request of variance to do a modification to the property? And it seems like, are we in violation of any of the codes? 50-144 and 50-147 is what's referenced in the documentation. So, what part of those codes are we asked, being asked to give a variance for?
I can answer this, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Please do.
Um, so, it's a non-conformity, and the zoning ordinance specifies that non-conformities cannot be enlarged in a way that'll increase the non-conformity. So, that's what they are seeking a variance from, because this will increase the non-conformity of the property by expanding the number of bedrooms.
Okay, that's you Cory?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I have a question for Jason. Uh, why are you not requesting a rezoning based on a use hardship for the property? That's from the staff findings and opposition. Standard 2.
Uh, I was really, uh, working with the, the staff at the city, and that the zoning request was what was guided, how I was guided to submit the request to the zoning board.
So it was based on staff recommendation, you're saying, Jason?
Yes, it is.
Is it possible to ask Commissioner Blower a question about this?
Of course it is.
Um, why was the applicant denied? Do you remember the reasoning?
This, this did not come before Planning Commission. This is, no, this is a variance, um, just for its use. Yes, this, this never came before, this came directly to ZBA.
Thank you.
To clarify, I think it did go to Planning Commission, it was just a long time ago.
Ooh, I'm sorry.
Oh, was that Cory that said that?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Um. Do you know when? I, I, I don't know if it going to zone inside, or Planning Commission's.
No, I don't. Um, I just know that based off the size of the property, it must have had to go to Planning Commission. It just, it must have been a long time ago.
Okay.
Cory, and by long time ago, are you, you believe that would have been when it was constructed in the 80s?
Right.
Or? Okay, in the 80s, it must have came before Planning Commission for a site plan. Um, but not for this variance or anything to do with the non-use variance of tonight.
I have one more question. I have, I'm looking at standard 4. Um, I'm wondering to the staff, what ways can existing units be altered to comply with this provision without increasing the number of dwelling units?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question for me?
Sure, I'm looking at standard 4, and I'm looking at your findings and opposition. What ways can existing units be altered to comply? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I think, um, our point here was that it could, they could comply with the ADA requirements of having non-barrier access to bedrooms, without increasing the number of bedrooms, they could just move one to the first floor. Uh, but instead they're opting to add. Does that make sense?
Yes. Thank you.
Anybody else here? No other discussion, no other questions for the applicant or staff?
I guess.
I entertain a motion at this point. There's a motion, pre-prepared for or against, on the last page, um, of staff report.
This is, this is Commissioner McCaskill, a motion to approve, I make a motion to approve, uh, the request variance by the Flint Housing Commission to expand a non-conforming multiple-family housing development in the A2 single-family medium-density residential district based on the following fact, following findings of the fact. It complies with the standard 1, based on the need for the development to comply with Section 504, the, of the Rehabilitation Act and Americans with Disabilities Act 2010, standard for accessible design. It complies with standard 2, based on the, on the fact that there do not appear to be similar surrounding land use that have to, have to be retrofit, that, jeez, that have to be, that have to retrofit their building to comply with the federal provision. It complies with standard 3, based on the properties being screened, and the proposed change not being a substantial difference change to the character of the property and surrounding area. It complies with standard 4, based on the housing development being built before the required for 5% of units being barrier-free was adopted. It complies with standard 5, based on the housing development protecting, scroll down, protecting public health, safety, and welfare by providing barrier-free housing for residents. Further, in order to ensure compliance with the standard, the following conditions are a part of my motion to approve.
You can strike the last part, because there aren't any conditions. I don't believe.
Yeah.
And I apologize for the wording, I'm not a poet.
Nope. Do we have support here?
Commissioner Blower, support.
Alright, we've got a motion to support. We have a discussion. Staff, let's take a roll call vote, if we don't have a discussion.
Mr. Stevens?
I approve.
Commissioner Hardy?
I approve.
Commissioner McCaskill?
Approve.
Commissioner Jordan?
Approve.
Commissioner Key?
Approve.
Commissioner Ricks?
Approve.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Coney?
Prove.
And Commissioner Blower?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Jason.
Thank you all, been a pleasure working with, but, thank you to the city for their assistance. Be safe, happy Thanksgiving.
Likewise.
Alright, we're gonna move on, uh, to city attorney report, we've heard a lot from the city attorney tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so just a couple of brief updates on ordinances. Um, the proposed zoning code is, um, I spoke to Suzanne before tonight's meeting, and we are aiming to get that on council's agenda for their second meeting in December. Um, one of the hurdles that we have to get through before that happens is the formatting of the ordinance, and it's a few hundred pages long, but I think I might be taking on that responsibility as a way to familiarize myself with the code. Um, so Suzanne and, and her staff and I are working to get that before council next month. And then for the, uh, proposed permanent marijuana ordinance, we're also hoping to bring that before city council next month, and that has already gone through the first reading and the public hearing, so we're hoping to get it on the agenda for a second reading next month, and hopefully for a vote. So those are my updates.
Is that safe to say that, um, they're not even gonna entertain zoning until they get through marijuana, correct?
Well, there, there appears to be some momentum, um, and some desire from city council members to consider it. Um, so that may help, um, push it forward a little bit faster. Um, I think that some of the council members have had questions from their constituents and other matters come up that cause them to, to want the zoning code to come before them sooner. Um, so, so that's encouraging. Um, but other than that, I really can't say one way or the other, what, what will happen in actuality.
I, I know that we have had, members of this board have had discussions and lobbied their council people on behalf of it also. Um, feel free to reach out to your councilperson and encourage them. Um, it's gotten frustrating at times for us. We've had applicants come in front of us that, um, you know, right now, our, our master plan and our zoning conflict, and, um, they're, they're coming for things that would, that are allowed under the master plan and will be allowed under the new zoning, but unfortunately, they're dealing with, what is it, 72, 7, yeah, 73 is our current ordinances, which are archaic, and, um, uh, they're having to come before us, and, um, I'm concerned that sometime, that somebody's gonna get turned down for something that they probably really shouldn't have came in front of us for, because, uh, it's been what, two or three years, the zoning ordinance has been drafted now? Cory, you probably know, you're around.
I believe March 2017, it was approved.
There you go. 2017, so. Well, I mean, I guess if they get it done in three years compared to, uh, the last one was, was, uh, done in the Nixon administration, we'll be doing that. Alright, um, with that, we're gonna move down to old business, membership roster. And, uh, Commissioner Hardy, I think you wanted the roster updated and then distributed, was that it? Am I remembering correctly?
That's correct.
And neither, well, hasn't distributed, and we don't have it.
And Mr. Chair, this is Kelly Thompson. Without Suzanne and Bill being here, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I, I know that they are working hard on this, and I believe that they were meeting with the city clerk's office to, to get a finalized, updated roster, so I, I know that they're working on that.
Okay, yeah, we also wanted the, last I knew, somebody brought to my attention, and I haven't checked recently, I apologize, uh, the city website reflects a very old roster, last I knew. Like two or three years ago roster. So you might want to note that to staff, to make, check with that, to make sure that's updated.
Yeah, Casey, maybe you and I can get together on that.
Um, the roster on the planning page?
Yeah, on the ZBA page.
I, I updated that a while ago.
Oh, great, then.
Yeah.
Somebody brought to my attention, it's probably been a month or two at least.
Oh, okay.
And it just, it just came to mind, we were doing that. Um, okay, and do we have anything else on our old business board? John, does that cover what you wanted?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, alright.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
Just real quick, while we're discussing the rosters, if, um, Commissioner Stevens, if at some point you change your legal name and you want us to update the roster to reflect that, just send an email to myself, or Bill, or Casey, and, and we'll make that change.
Thank you.
Alright, um, we're gonna move down to new business. Jerry, did you have something on new business here?
Uh, yes, I had a question or concern. When I was reading through this current documentation for the, uh, the variance asked for from the Flint housing unit, and I was reading through the standards, I noticed that, uh, there was no response or check mark in the boxes. It says, "Does site meet requirements, yes, no, or non-applicable?" And I was accustomed in the past to seeing either a yes or no checked off in that box. But for none of the five standards where those boxes checked this time. So I didn't know whether there was a change being made, or no answer given, or what. So Cory, I guess that'll go to you.
Yep.
As to why, as to why I don't have checks in one of those boxes.
Yes.
I also have the same question, I saw that, noticed it too.
It's my fault, this is, um, um, I did a staff report this time, and the reason I didn't fill out that part is because, um, in other communities, they don't fill out that part, and the reason for that is it doesn't look great to have staff leading the board. So, instead, we opt to just give you all the facts, give you, um, evidence and support and opposition, and then you can fill out that section, depending on how you feel after reading the evidence. That was my, uh, thinking behind not filling out that part, does that make sense?
It sure does. Um, it was also helpful, you had a motion pre-written out for or against at the end, we haven't had that, and, um, uh, I appreciated that.
Yeah, no problem. If there's anything else I can do to improve the staff reports, let me know.
Just it was a little bit of a change we weren't expecting, it was a little format difference, and that was all, threw us off for a second, John and I were, or Jerry and I were on the phone earlier.
Yeah Cory, you know, you know I read every word, okay?
I appreciate that.
I'm good though, thanks.
Okay, anybody else? Um, you know, we're missing one member, we don't have anybody in the fourth row, or, that's Kate, right? We should probably reach out to Kate, she's made a point.
Commissioner Telaga, I actually, during this meeting, has, uh, sent her a message, uh, reminding her of that vacancy, I believe she's aware of it.
And did you get a response?
I believe she is in a meeting.
Well, not right now.
Right. I, I sent it, I sent it while we, I sent it while we were waiting to, to open.
I thought it was a while back you'd sent it or something.
I, we have, we have talked about it in the past, but this evening, I actually sent her a message.
Maybe I'll reach out to her then too. I realize she's in a meeting now.
Yeah.
But it's, it's great, um, and I want to commend everybody. Um, uh, before we were on this board, they had a problem getting quorum, and, um, and then having enough people quorum to, to, uh, pass, uh, projects or turn them down, and, um, we kind of struggled for a little bit with people attending, but, um, with this group, uh, we have great attendance, and I commend you, and it makes everything a lot easier, and it makes us a lot easier to serve the city and, um, serve our applicants, and, and that's what's most important, we're here for civic duty, and I, I just want to let everybody know how much I appreciate everybody's prepared, um, on time and at the meetings. And I can tell you, there were times, when I first came on this board, I would see somebody open up their envelope when they sat down for the meetings, first time they'd looked at it. So. Alright, we have any other new business? Anything at all?
Uh, none for me.
Okay, anybody, anybody, board, staff? Alright, I'm gonna call for a motion to adjourn.
With the completion of everything, this is Commissioner Key. I make a motion-
With the completion of everything, this is Commissioner Key, I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Commissioner Ricks, I second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Everybody have a long extended weekend, happy weekend and safe.
Thank you, you too.
Hey, real quick, staff, do you have anything on deck for next month before everybody goes?
Yes, we have three uh variances.
What's the date on that?
Uh, March, or December 15th, I believe. Yeah.
That's a third or third Tuesday? All right, everybody, you go down in your calendar, December 15th, three cases.